Hi, welcome all to the city council meeting Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 at 5:30. We have closed session tonight. And pledge of allegiance. Scott.
A pledge I would give to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Constitution, and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda. Councilmember Frios.
Here.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sabatia. Mayor Jordan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sabatia called in. He had a conflict with work traveling. Excused. I don't know if that matters or not. We have a closed session now, a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. Do we have any public comments on this before we?
Nobody in chambers and no, uh, nobody present in Zoom via Zoom.
Thank you. We will adjourn to closed session. See you all at 6:00. Right, I just want to have everything. Hi, welcome everybody to the regular city council meeting of the City of San Juan Baptista. It is 6:02 on February 18th. Can I just have the record show that Councilmember Aranda is here? And closed session ended at 5:52.
Noted for the record. Thanks, Mayor.
If the city attorney would please take us out of a closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council and public, the city council met in closed session on item 2A, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, Orozco versus City of San Juan Baptista, California Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The council heard from their city attorney. And there's nothing to report out.
Thank you. Councilmember Aranda, we have a proclamation this evening for Give Kids a Smile event. Councilmember Aranda, if you would please do the honor.
Yes, thank you. And this will go over, uh, we'll go to Give Kids a Smile on February 28, 2025, whereas Give Kids a Smile was created by the American Dental Association, ADA, as an initiative to give free dental care to children of underserved populations. And whereas the San Benito Health Foundation is a proud Give Kids a Smile partner and is committed to improving the health and dental services for our community under, uh, our community's underserved population. And whereas, since Give Kids a Smile began in 2003, over 9.5 million uninsured children have received free oral health care. And whereas, whereas on Friday, February 28th, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, the San Benito Health Foundation will be hosting its annual Give Kids a Smile event where dental director, Dr. Edwin Acosta, along with staff, will provide free dental screenings and fluoride treatment for children and teens under 17 years old. Now therefore, I
Mayor Jordan.
Mayor Jordan, on behalf of San Juan Baptista, do hereby thank San Benito Health Foundation for their ongoing efforts and commitment to San Juan Baptista's community. And this was dated today.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in the audience to receive this proclamation? Thank you. Hi, welcome. Thank you very much for, for the work that you guys do. Thank you. Public comment. It is now time for public comment. This will be for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards? And, and time will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Lori Tinkersley.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Jordan and council. My name is Lori Tinkersley. I am here on behalf of San Benito County Integrated Waste Management to give some updates on our programs. This Saturday, we will be hosting our first recycle day event of this year on February 22nd from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at our integrated waste management offices at 2301 Technology Parkway in Hollister. We will be accepting household hazardous waste such as paints, used motor oil and filters, batteries and more. For this event, we will also be accepting mattresses, tires and e-waste. For more information on acceptable material, residents can visit our website at sanbenito county ca.gov/hw. We will be hosting our first cleanup of the year on Saturday, March 1st at Hollister Super from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We are also helping supply San Juan Baptista's community cleanup, which is on February 22nd from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. San Juan Baptista's rec department will be stationed at Luck Park giving out supplies. As a reminder, residential fluorescents, paints, pool yard and household chemical cleaners, household batteries, used motor oil and filters and more are accepted at our monthly household hazardous waste event at John Smith landfill. This event occurs every third Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Our next monthly event will be on Saturday, March 15th. For more information on acceptable material, residents can visit our website at sanbenito county ca.gov/hw. Follow us on Instagram and Facebook at SBCIWM to get updates on upcoming events and programs. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't. Do we have any other speaker cards?
Yes, we do. Madam Mayor, Lucy Sorpa.
Hi, welcome. Can you please state your name for the record?
Good evening. My name is Lucy Sorpa Barca. And I am here on the task of San Juan Baptista and honored to be the mayor's director and our board directors. I've been appointed to share a few exciting updates with all of you, as well as activities, goals and objectives this year and serving our community. We are celebrating our 10th year anniversary this year and serving our community. We're going to have the event, Call Chairs to 10 Years, and the event date is to be announced. We're focusing on increasing the visibility and viability of our downtown tourism in a collaborative effort with community and local leadership. We're forming a community collaborative and events to gather input from locals on improving downtown San Juan Baptista's vibrancy and meeting the needs of the community and what day we'd like to see in their own community.
Lucy, I'm sorry. Can I interrupt for a second? Is the microphone on?
No, can you click on the, there you go. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Zoom. Much better.
We are going to be revamping and revitalizing our online and social media presence, consolidating our platforms for unified messaging and streamlined user experience. We're going to basically put everything in an all-in-one format so users have to go to fewer sites to access the information that are related to our town and our events. We're going to reboot our social media, putting everything more in a consolidated space. We're going to create, I've already created a landing page with a QR code directing folks to the landing page. And these could be window clings placed in our business storefronts. Along with that, we'll have live maps directing visitors to retailers and food and beverage businesses. We hope to increase engagement across all platforms and we're going to track the performance measures. We'll be creating live Facebook events and sharing that on local groups. We'll also be updating our website, linking it to our social media and our QR landing page. We'll be implementing strategic marketing campaigns targeting our tourism sector. We're going to add some signage and do some ongoing data analysis on visitor traffic, behaviors, engagement via place or AI and other strategic data analysis tools. We'd like to remind everyone here that we are absolutely here to serve in a spirit of collaboration. We want to sustain the vibrancy and the viability of our beautiful town. We would like you to let us know on, on an ongoing basis how we can serve you and serve our community and that we can provide meaningful and measurable change in our town. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Graciela.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Graciela Nutter and I'm glad I was able to follow her because my, my, my three minutes is loosely connected. Good evening. As I said, my name is Graciela Nutter. And after a few years away, I am happy to say that I'm once again a resident of San Juan. I work as a creative associate at El Teatro Campesino located at 705 Port Street. Thank you for lending me your ear for public comment tonight. I'd like to bring a few things to the attention of the council if I may. First, El Teatro Campesino will be celebrating its 60th anniversary this year. Our hope is that our elected officials and city staff will join us throughout the year as we commemorate three score of arts and culture by the famed theater company. Secondly, I'd like to comment on the town hall meeting that was held on February 11th. As the, at the well-attended meeting led by Regional Government Services, or RGS, those in attendance at Luck Library were asked to submit recommendations to help RGS as they assist the city in hiring our next city manager. As part of the recruitment process, we were asked to fill out sticky notes with ideas of what qualities San Juanders would like to see in our future city manager. The group gave suggestions in regard to leadership, priorities, expertise and characteristics. As the RGS rep read through our feedback notes, words like "community-oriented," "friendly," "small-town," "small-town knowledgeable," "family-oriented" and "reachable" were listed. Of the multiple notes, it became evident that what the town folk were seeking was a city manager that would be accountable, respectable and approachable. I left the meeting pondering a few questions. If these qualities and more are being asked to our incoming city manager, would it not stand to reason that we as a community should reciprocate in showing the same qualities and attributes? Is there work to be done by the residents and businesses of San Juan Baptista? Are there steps we must take in order to be a manageable city? What changes, if any, should we make to show the new city manager that we, the citizens of this quaint mission town, are community-oriented, respectable and approachable? What sticky notes would we give ourselves if asked to make a recommendation about what we want to see from our citizens? My hope is that we'll share our forthcoming, we will show our forthcoming city manager the same qualities we will be asking of them. If there is work to be done, then let's come together and get it done. Since my return, I've met some wonderful new residents as well as connected with old friends and acquaintances. I've encountered folks with a desire to make this town an active, thriving community. It can be done. But as the saying goes, in order to show your ability, you can't just talk about the clay. You have to show the sculpture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Castle.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Bob Castle. I hope that you've all had an opportunity to read the arguments that I made in a letter that I sent you several weeks ago. There are some new developments in this matter that I want to share with you. Around January 16th, a few days before the January meeting, my wife's son-in-law and I met with Jerry Sanguenetti and Oscar, who's a city code enforcement officer, here in his room. Jerry showed us the aerial photo of our part of the block that I live on with a site drawing drawn in, which all of you have seen. He explained to us that the site drawings shown on the photos were derived from the requirements found in what's called the Green Book, formerly known as standard specifications for civil engineering construction. None of us had ever heard of this book. On February 5th, I emailed Ms. Lopez asking for access to the Green Book set of engineering codes. She replied that she would have to get in touch with the engineers. She never got back to me. In my understanding, the city is required to make available to the public whatever ordinances are in effect. And they're not available. I went to the library and the nearest copy they could find was UC Berkeley. Ms. Lopez could have asked the city manager to buy the book. It's available in both hardbound and electronic forms for less than $400. Had she done that, I could have been studying the code provisions in question the next day. This did not hap, this is not an oversight. City officials have tried from the beginning to keep me out of loop and uninformed. Last week, I authorized my attorney to buy it, just to find out what your owners say. Yesterday, I talked with my attorney. He has gone through the Green Book page by page. He discovered that there are no site requirements whatsoever to be found in the Green Book. The entire argument by your staff regarding their authority to supersede the the fence ordinances are bogus. There's no, there's no legal basis to any of the things that they are saying. Mr. Giffen, Ms. Lopez and the people in engineering have all been lying to you about this situation. You must be curious about their motives. I understand that you must rely upon staff members for expert advice. And, and this is a situation which leaves you, the council, vulnerable to being manipulated. I believe that's what's happened. I think your staff has been misleading you and leading you out of, I don't think you have any any power to do anything about my fence and hedge. Their grandfather did. I apologize to you for the, my tirade from last month. It felt like all of you were ganging up on me. And now I understand that you are in a position where your staff can, can lead you astray. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Mendiola.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Excited to be here. San Juan hometown. First time being here in this room. I work for the Paharo Valley Water Management Agency, or PV Water. And we were awarded a $2 million grant from the Department of Water Resources to implement a watershed resilience plan. Interestingly, the reason why I got into water is because of the lack of drinkability in San Juan water. But that's, we'll leave that for a different day. Yeah. But, but watershed resilience planning, back to the, the reason why I'm here. We're having a meeting on March 10th at 1:00 to 4:00 PM at, in the Oromos Grange. That's our first of five public meetings to hear from everybody in the watershed. The state's Prop 4 passed this last November, and so there'll be more funds to do things like this. But it's important that wherever you are in life, that you think about, that you're, you're in a watershed. Wherever you, wherever you go, you're, you're in a watershed. And San Juan Baptista is kind of at this really central focal point of the Paharo River watershed. The watershed is most of San Benito County, a little bit of Southern Santa Clara County and the southern part of Santa Cruz County and just a sliver of Monterey County. This is all to say, we are all connected by many things in life, but we're also all connected because we all live in the Paharo River watershed. If you would like to think more about this, please do attend the meeting. Again, this is just the first of many. There'll be two at least in-person meetings and the rest will be remote to encourage broader participation. If transportation is a challenge, we may move one of the remote meetings to in-person. But there are flyers in the back of this room, English and Spanish. Feel free to email me. My email is here. And there's a website with the fact sheet that is on it. I would have brought some fact sheets, but printers don't always work. So our website, I maintain it. Let me know if there's any errors. I'll fix the website. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Michael Poncy.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, Michael Poncy. I hope this will be taken as a constructive criticism. On March 25th, we had the Mission 10 Half Marathon Race. I want to make it known that I support this event as it brings in a lot of people to town that spend plenty of money. I have a suggestion. Next time a permit is issued for any race in town, all been, all volunteers need to be taught SOP, standard operating procedure, for residents to cross through the race route during the race. At about 10:10 AM that day, I needed to get through the route. At Second and Jefferson Street, I approached a barrier and asked the two young girls to let me through. They told me that I couldn't get through because of the race. I laughed and told them I was a resident and we are allowed to come through and go carefully as the notice that was left on my door. They still said that I couldn't cross, so I asked them to call a person in charge. When they made the call, they told me that if I had a complaint, I had to go to the mission. I told them, how am I supposed to get to the mission if I can't get through the barrier? I could see that the young girls were getting flustered, so I stopped and I thanked them for volunteering and doing a great job. So I got back in my truck and I called the non-emergency sheriff's phone number and asked for the woman who answered if a deputy could respond to my location or give me a call. I waited for a while, but no deputy called. Nobody, no deputy showed up. So I drove to the next street where there was no monitors and I passed through the barriers. You would think that as this was the 41st annual race, getting through wouldn't be a problem. It's still a problem. After finally getting through, as I came out of the windmill, fire and ambulances were responding to a call at the windmill. There was no deputy in sight. So I asked, are any deputies assigned to this race? Were they assigned to this race? And can it be the requirement before a permit is issued to have an SOP taught to all the volunteers? So when this situation happens again, they know what to do. And by the way, I did get a text from the sheriff's department about 7:03 PM that night. I text them back, "Thank you for the quick response." Thank you.
Thank you. No other speaker cards received and seeing no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Administrative report. This is the treasurer's report and monthly financial statements. Thank you all for coming. See you later. Have a nice night. Stay. Enjoy. It's supposed to be here. Yep. Yeah. Wendy, hi, are you with, there you are. Hi Wendy.
Hi there. How are you all?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you. In your package tonight, you have the financial reports for the six-month period that ended December 31st, representing 50% of the city's fiscal year. Our general fund revenues are running close in alignment. We're at 49% for the year-to-date. And correspondingly, our general fund expenditures are at 42% for the year-to-date. And the net effect is a positive change in the general fund balance of $249,000. The Water Enterprise Fund revenues are at 54% for the year. And the expenses are at 42%, providing a positive change in the fund balance of $557,000. A sewer enterprise fund is at 53% on the revenues and 50% on the expenses, providing a positive change in fund balance for the year of $514,000.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Aranda?
No, thank you, Wendy. Everything looks great. No comment, no questions or comments here.
Thank you, Councilmember Frios.
No questions or comments. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
No comments. Thank you.
Just two quickies expenditures. The Rancho Vista CFD is at 146%. Is, and that was for fence replacement due to flooding. Is Meritage, and I'm not sure that you can answer this, is Meritage or FEMA assisting the city with this?
Not to my knowledge. Not that I've heard of.
Okay. Interesting. And the, the COPS at 134%? Revenue.
Yeah, we, we are provided $100,000 as a for sure every year. But if the county receives more than that from the state, then it's prorated and our share has, over the last couple of years, been coming in at more than $100,000, but conservatively, we budget at 100. And that's to offset our lawn or reinforcement services.
Nice. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
No speaker cards received and seeing no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearing and the applicant has withdrawn his appeal. So we are moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that the council would like to pull? Councilmember Aranda?
No items.
Thank you. Councilmember Frios.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any members from the public would like to pull the, anything from the consent agenda?
No speaker cards received and seeing nobody come up to the podium, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Aranda, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Frios?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Action items, city manager, job description and salary schedule. We have our GS with us this evening and Richard, hi, welcome.
Good evening.
First, I, I just want to thank every, I'd like to thank everybody for attending the town hall meeting the other night. They all just left. Sorry, Richard. Okay, it's all you.
They were here to see me. All right, thank you. So everyone has the classification study report that we had conducted. So we, one piece of it was to evaluate the current job description, which was from 2006, so the position and role in the city, everything had expanded greatly in scope and, you know, duties, responsibilities. So we have developed a new job description that everyone has hopefully had the opportunity to review. So we're recommending that to utilize for the, as part of the recruitment process. And the other part of it was, we did a salary classification salary review. So we used nine different agencies. Not only did we look at the city manager position, we looked at assistant city managers because, you know, it's hard to get the exact same size, scope of each of the agencies. And then in addition, we evaluated department heads from the various agencies as well. And that's where really the salaries aligned with the salary schedule proposed for the city. Now through the subcommittee, we were talking about, you know, due to budget constraints, we were looking at a $160,000 to the top of the 180, but really we want you But really, we want you to consider, you know, even taking that higher. And if we're looking at the department head level, that was found to be about 18% higher, which is 200 and around $210,000. But obviously, it's up to you of getting it up to 200. Of course, this is the range for growth in the position. And as the board ultimately, you'll determine, you know, what salary to bring that new city manager in at. So any questions with the job description first part of it?
Questions, comments, concerns, Councilmember Aranda?
No, actually, I don't have anything with that, but I did have a comment on the salary.
Sure.
Was so for the 200, you were saying for 200,000 annually, that would give us somebody that would want to grow in that position? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, well, when we're looking at the salary, one, obviously, you want it to be equitable to the work being performed. But then you have to take the, you know, the budget into account. But when we're talking about the talent, we'll be, you know, recruiting. If they were looking at a department head role in one of these other agencies that were, we were conducted, you know, that would be the comparable as far as it's, that's why if you can get to, you know, 200,000, you're getting, you know, the pool expands, you know, as people might be making more. Some people will take pay cuts. We'll see at times to get that opportunity, you know, to be a city manager.
Got it. And, and would you say that's appropriate if we weren't providing any of the other benefits like the pension and all that other stuff that goes along with it?
Yeah, so that, you know, should be considered as well. The last was making, you know, 180,000. That's where that, you know, figure had come from.
Got it. And, and when you would, and again, when you went back, could you remind me, what cities were you looking at when you were comparing the salaries?
Delray Oaks, Gilroy, Hollister, Kings City, Marina, Salinas, obviously, those are larger. That's where you look more at that department head level. But Seaside, Soladad and Watsonville.
Got it. And, and there wasn't any other smaller towns compared to us, would you say, that kind of fit the?
Yeah, not that we're coming into it. These are, you know, the ones that are really, where the pools generally would come from. Obviously, it'll be nationwide opportunity. But as far as local, these were, you know, around there.
No, yeah, I understand that we're really close to the Bay Area, so I can see. Other than that, no further questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Friel.
No, I'm good with the job description. I was just thinking on the salary range since we budgeted for, we're budgeting up to 180. If we may, we can adjust that salary range from like 180 to 210. Or 215.
The high end.
The high end.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So that way, there is that progress room. And, and that gives us some time to budget for any, any pay increases in the, in the future. Does that make, does that make sense? Okay. Yep. And that's, that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you. Yes, I, I think the job description is very comprehensive. It almost seems like this one individual is doing quite a bit. I understand that our city is small and you're, you're scoping, looking at other salaries in the area. We are much smaller, but I think anyone stepping into our city has a lot on their proverbial plate. When you consider the water project and the wastewater project and the fire district, which one would, you know, be fooled into thinking, well, gee, you're only a city of 2,200 people. What, why do you have to pay that much? But there's a lot of work involved here. So I'm amenable to putting a higher upper end for some growth. But also, with that being said, contingent on looking at our contracts for outside consulting fees. I have to admit that if we can look at that and that's not in your purview, it's in us and management here, staff, because I feel like that would loosen up some funds to perhaps put into the pot for that higher end range and to be sustainable. And I just want to be conservative in that because the job description has quite a bit of meat in it for what that person is required to do. But if we're, we're paying, you know, numerous consulting fees, that just doesn't make fiscal sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Great work. And again, I appreciate you and LaShawn coming down and doing the town hall. I was thrilled with all of the folks who, who participated. So I've had some conversations about the, the salary band. And so if, if I can, where are we? Call for a motion to approve a resolution adopting the proposed updated job description of the city manager, which describes the current duties and approve an updated salary going from 160 to 215. If somebody wants to make that motion.
Public comment?
Oh, thank you. Can I have a public comment? Do we have a public comment? Are you, are you gonna? Sure.
Eddie Watancha, the question is, just want to confirm, who's the hiring body for the, the position? And then what is the probationary period for the individual coming in? And then also, I know that we're going to be shooting for the position to be filled at this level. But is there any secondary options to see that when we may have a potential candidate that doesn't necessarily fulfill those requirements, but does have potential to kind of come into the position and feel like you said, we want somebody that's going to grow with the community and has that potential? Is there opportunity for somebody to go at a, at a lower level for consideration? Different requirements for evaluation of a potential hiring candidate, but gives us some flexibility of potential candidates where it doesn't necessarily all meet at that one higher requirement? Just something to consider. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just a quick statement. I understand wanting to spend more money to get more candidates. I'm just concerned if the council knows before your vote tonight, where are you going to get that money? We got a lot of money to be spent coming up that we still don't know where we're going to get that money from. And also with the rate increase, city manager won't last too long in San Juan. I don't think we've had a city manager in the last 20 years, has been here more than five years. And that's always a problem. It seems like we're always having to go through this process every five years, every five years, another city manager, another city manager, another city manager. And stuff gets left on the plate. And then incoming city manager has to pick it up. And I don't know, I just don't think that's very encouraging. But my main thing is, before you vote, do you know where you're going to get the money from? Thank you.
Thank you.
And seeing no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Okay, back to the council. Any final comments, Councilmember Aranda?
Yeah, actually, I just thought of something. So if we were to move forward with this, this is just post Iraq, right? Where this is not us. In other words, what I'm concerned about is we just had that town hall regarding the, the city manager position. And I felt that there was still some, some unfinished business where maybe we needed to meet again, or I would have liked to seen a translator or someone there for Spanish-speaking individuals that want to get, be involved in this community, have something to say. So I, this is nothing tied to that, right? Or is this all part of that? Sorry.
Come, say that one more time. You want another town hall?
Yes, that, that's almost where I'm trying to go at. Like this is, I mean, this wasn't, was all this discussed there? Sorry, I wasn't a part of that meeting, showed up late. So it was, was this brought up there? Is this the first time?
Salaries were not?
Okay, it was just what we were looking for from the individual, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, the job description covered community input?
No, I mean, the job description is what the experts put together, we put together as far as, you know, what the job duties after the meeting with you is what the, the role is. The community involvement is what they're looking for. Obviously, there's a lot of crossover. I mean, you get into the economic development, you know, communication, leadership. So a lot of it's crossover, but really that's to be utilized in the recruitment process itself to get you, you know, city manager, you know, for the people and with their input in there.
Got it. And, and then the other question here to Mike Poncy's point for, for salary. I think Wendy, I think if you're still in line, maybe you can help me. Is, do, do we have anywhere where we can find funds to, to cover that? Or would we be at a, would be, we, would we be in a pinch?
I won't deny that the general fund budget is very, very tight. And with this increase, we're looking with full burden, roughly $30,000 more per year. We are rolling into our annual budget analysis and that includes the payroll as well. We, I think we can absorb it, but then we'll likely be seeing some cuts in other areas because it is very tight.
Right. So part of the conversation was, thank you for that Wendy, was to, like in every job, you have a salary band. And you don't start somebody at the higher band. But you have that upper level so that years down the road, five, 10, 15 years down the road, come on, be optimistic. That, that they can grow into the position and grow into a higher salary band. I don't think it was our intention to hire somebody at the 215 range. And we kind of, and I don't want to go into it at all, but we kind of had this.
Yes, I do recall the conversation, yes.
In, in a closed session. So yeah, it would, we would start low and as years progress and the city becomes so economic development and, and everything that eventually we'll be able to maybe even adjust it to hire, who knows? I don't know. But yes, it wasn't our intention to start somebody or to start somebody at 215 or 200.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, and that, that's what I want to make sure that everyone knows that, so that it doesn't sound.
Thank you. Yes. No, we are not starting somebody at 215,000, but we didn't want to dissuade anybody from.
Yeah, no, obviously, I understand. It opens up the pool, it allows for more candidates to apply. And yes, I, I do, do think, for me, I'm all about retaining really good talent with finding it to, to Mike Poncy's point. Yes, that we're always, we have a lot of high turnover here. And I think we just, somewhere, we got to figure it out how to retain talent. And I, to me, this makes sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Friel?
No, I just, I think you hit that. We, we're going to start, you know, we're going to start low, of course. And then this, the salary survey is, is a little bit discouraging because some of the highest cost of living in the country is right here.
Yeah, around there.
And it was used in, I would have liked to seen a little more from maybe the Sierra Foothills or the other places. But the cost of living there is much different. So it's, we're in a, we're in a 2,200 people, plus or minus, you know, 10. It's not a whole lot of towns like that around. So we're kind of in a, in a unique spot. So I, when, when they first brought this stuff to us, the, the salary ranges, we were like, oh golly. I think what Seaside just hired and their city manager is like 280 something. So yikes, there's no way we knew that. Yeah. It's, it's been, it's been a juggling act for sure.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes, yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Aranda for clarifying that. And I'd like to think that if the candidate is qualified, comes in with all of the characteristics, plus the experience and training and whatnot, that we don't just set our sights on the low end, maybe mid-range. I'd like to put that out there. And then I too was kind of disappointed that the pool was from the neighboring cities, which are much larger. Department heads are getting paid, you know, that's, you have to put that in perspective. And I too, like Councilmember Friel, thought maybe there would have been some outreach to other cities that are our size, historic, kind of fit the bill like we are and get more of a realistic, you know, salary band. But then again, like I said, we have some really serious things on our plate that our city manager has to deal with, and that is the fire district contract and the water and the waste management project. So that's really specific and unusual to maybe another town our size. Once again, I'm just going to put it out there. I think we need to look at the cuts. And the cuts are not for our people. I mean, our people, our people that we hire perm with benefits that maybe have been here for, you know, a decade or more. Those are our people. Those are people that, you know, stay here, want to be here. And I like to trim the fat with unnecessary contracts, contracts that maybe run too long, that they were out their purpose and, and their expenditure is more than we can sustain. That's where I like to pull the funds from. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. I have no further comments. Sure. One, one quick, quick note to Eddie, who said, looking at people who might not be as qualified as a city manager. We did that, we did that last time. Our former city manager was a project manager. So we're always open to the right person for, for this, for this community. Okay, sorry, we have a motion on the floor to approve a resolution adopting the proposed update job description of the city manager with the current duties and approve an updated salary range from 160 to 215.
So moved.
That would be a second. So motion, motion made by, motion made by Jordan, seconded by Councilmember Aranda. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Friel?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Informational items and reports, city manager's report. We're talking about you like you're not here.
Hi. Hello, everyone. I have a presentation this month. It's exciting. I did submit a report, so you guys have it kind of laid out in memo format, but I thought this might be fun for the public to see visual. So we've, I've kind of broken up the presentation into four parts. This, this month and since my last report out, I've been focusing on strengthening internal operations, improving community engagement and addressing key infrastructure and policy matters. And so this report provides an update through mid-February. And so it kind of highlights significant actions taken, ongoing projects and upcoming initiatives. Next slide, please. And so it kind of highlights significant actions taken, ongoing projects and upcoming initiatives. Next slide, please. Um, some of the things, um, held a staff meeting um with our leadership here at the city. On January twenty-second, we we talked, we covered a lot of topics. Um, it included um city manager expectations for staff, right? Respect, collaboration, communication. Confidentiality, what policies we have, looking at procedures, liabilities, closing the loop on communication. Um, speaking with one voice and um. I we talked about the importance of one-on-one meetings. I've been meeting with staff. I think I've met with almost everyone and missing one person. Um, which is big deal for me because schedule is kind of busy. Um, and then one of the things that we want to do is hold a quarterly all-staff meeting sometime. Towards the end of March, beginning of April, and that's an opportunity for the staff to all come together. And for them to ask me questions, bring me questions, comments, concerns, and we kind of talk about them um as a team. Next slide, please. Um, we also did, uh, I did lots of community engagement in public meetings. Um, I attended the San Benito County Business Council meeting. Provided an update on our upcoming Fire Services Town Hall. Um, I attended the Historic Resources Board Meeting, Planning Commission Meeting. Um, that was great. It was the first meeting for our four newly appointed commissioners. Um, and as the staff, we were able to give them an overview of the planning department responsibilities. And discussed what their purview is as a board, and we solicited input. On future agenda items. Also did some engagement with the Spirit of San Juan's Board of Directors, got to listen to some of their community concerns related to Third Street. Including signage, tourism and regulatory compliance. Um, and then we documented those concerns and forwarded them to um the relevant city departments. Next slide, please. Um, we are engaging um with um the county. The city of Hollister, uh, I didn't add this, but I'm gonna say it out loud, so. Don't be surprised, um, we're we were in discussions regarding the feasibility study for a fire district. Um, and so we've been engaging with both the county and the city on that process. Um, we also um are continuing to collaborate for the Fire Services Town Hall, which is going to be on February twenty-second. Um, and I we walked through a media release and talked about how we were going to engage the community and push that information out um. Into the community, next slide. Um, we have been um in communication with Bill Lee from Martha's Kitchen. He wants to provide an additional day for the senior lunch program at the community hall. Um, and so that is gonna launch on March third. They're gonna provide lunches every Monday from eleven to two. We're gonna put those flyers out on social media. We're gonna put them out in the mail to residents. Next slide, please. So we have some legislative and advocacy efforts related to our water. Uh, challenges, we're we've we've engaged with our federal lobbyists. On our drinking water pipeline, the A-Drop program and a potential fire hydrants upgrade. Um, I met with Jason Brundy. Um, so in addition to that, we also met with the US Army, US Army Corps of Engineers. Um, to explore funding avenues related to our drinking water pipeline, A-Drop program. And as you guys are aware, we have um. From uh Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren's office, we have ten million unfunded. Um, funding opportunities, and so we're engaging with the US Army Corps on how we can. Get that money. Um, we also have engaged with our state lobbyist, Tommy Rojas and his team. We've talked and so through them, we've talked to Senator Laird's office and their team. We've also talked to Speaker Rivas's team, and we've engaged them about funding opportunities for our drinking water pipeline, A-Drop program, fire hydrants. We've talked to them about state park collaborations and any future grant opportunities that they have. I think those conversations have been extremely productive, um, and I hope to be able to report um more soon. Um, I've already heard from a state parks representative, and I'm very excited about that. Um, so stay tuned. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so under infrastructure and development, I've uh met with MNS who are they're. Um, a part of our engineering department, and I had an opportunity to meet a team from the USDA. Um, that was very, very interesting. They came out and they did a tour of our wastewater pipeline project. Um, and it was nice to meet them and to give an update on where we are. Met with Dana Jacobson regarding um our water treatment agreement, and we've been talking about A-Drop. Um, and how we're, you know, looking at funding options. And also trying to narrow down on the major question, which is how much water does San Juan Bautista need to purchase? In this agreement, in in progress, but we are working towards that rapidly. Um, we would love, um, and I've already spoken to the council about this offline, I'm saying it publicly. We want to host um a special meeting where we just do a water study. We talk all about water with the council and the community so that we can all get better educated. On where we are, where we've been, where we are now, and what we need to do in order to move this uh forward. Next slide, please. So we, um, this is something that's come up kind of really rapidly within last week or so. Um, we have some PLHA funds um that are designated for affordable housing um in ADUs. And um that funding is um very, very specific. It's for Activity Two, which is the pre-development, development, acquisition, rehab and preservation of affordable rental and ownership housing, including ADUs. Um, and so in order to use that money, we have to find a partner in order to help us with that. Um, through the engagement of the planning department. We've learned that Habitat for Humanity Monterey Bay is interested in potentially partnering with us. They have run this program. And others in other places similar to Watsonville, and they've actually they actually used to have a Habitat for Humanity in San Benito County. Um, so they're 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 very interested, so stay tuned for that, because I may have to come back to you guys. And ask you to um consider an agreement with Habitat for Humanity, so we don't lose the opportunity of. Using this fund, these funds. We have to get it done this month, or it's kind of off the table between this month and the beginning of March. Next slide, please. Okay, um, so. Some administrative and policy oversight things, I just want to kind of give you a bit of flavor. Um, this this last few weeks, we've talked a lot about special events, what the policies and procedures are for special events. And how to process special events permits. Lots of interesting things have come out of that discussion. Um, and we're hoping to have a standard operating procedure and a practice in place so that we can inform the community. This is the process, this is how much you're gonna pay, and this is how we move forward. Um, one of the big challenges that I've that I've noticed is um. Communication is needs to be improved a great deal amongst the staff. And with the community and people who are pulling permits, and so we're working through that. Um, I've, you know, been able to help with the agenda review, guided on city operations. I'm currently working with staff to review all the contracts in preparation for the mid-year budget review. So it's very interesting that contracts have been mentioned a lot tonight, but we are looking at them. Um, and then I also had an opportunity to attend the city manager town hall recruitment. And really hear from the community what they wanted to see in their city manager. Um, and I think that that the comments were wonderful and seemed very in line with what a city manager should be doing, right? Um, so that was great. Next slide, please. And so in conclusion, um. Some of the things that I'm gonna be work us on, we're focusing on is the finding us a partner to use our PLHA funds. The Fire Services Discussion and continuing working on our infrastructure improvements. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Aranda?
I know. I do have a question, I or actually a few, um. Under community, community engagement, public meetings, um, great, great job on meeting with with the with a bunch of different um. Groups, um, I noticed that one of them was Spirit of San Juan Bautista's board. Do you do you have um plans to meet with the San Juan Business Association as well?
Yes.
Great.
I've I've actually um put that request out a couple of times in person. To the um Discover San Juan group, and I'm I have to waiting to hear back.
Got it, no worries, just as long as we're.
Absolutely.
Both sides. Um, and let's see. And the other one was. No, I think that's actually that's it. That's the only thing I think I kind of flagged and great work on the economic development stuff and all that. I mean, I just want to say. Holy cow, you're freaking busy and great, great job just for doing all that. Um, I don't know how you do it, but.
Kudos to the amazing city staff.
Absolutely.
Without them, I would not be able to.
Yes, I actually, you're right, to the staff and everyone. Good, good job. You guys are doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you, councilmember Frios.
I'm too, I'm terrible with acronyms, P-L-H-A.
The Permanent Local Housing Allocation.
Okay, how about the other one, H-C-D?
Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay, good. And aside from that, as soon as you said fire hydrant uh replacement, I glazed over within my happy place, so. I'm uh, I I'm, I I, yeah, you've been really busy and and um. And I have to, I want to say I agree with councilmember Lopez. As we go through and sign these checks, I notice. There's like kind of redundancies, and we've been talking about that. I kind of just say, hey, why do we have two alarm companies, you know, or? So they're they're really busting their butts right now to do a lot of consolidation, which is gonna be. Great, yeah, yeah. I mean, one, and we shouldn't be speaking to twelve different people. There should be just. One contractor for everything here and same, you know, same with the water and all that kind of stuff, but. No, that, um, gosh, you've been busy. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you, um, city manager Colic, you have been extremely busy. I appreciate the slide presentation. Really easy to follow. Um, I too, my ears perked up when you said fire hydrants. I'm like. Whoa, Scott's gonna be happy. And then also getting the water to um supply the water to the said upgraded water, um, fire hydrants. So all of that infrastructure, um, when you mentioned infrastructure, um. Are you also picking up the plan with the city engineer about some of the re. Repaving of roads? I mean, I can name a couple of streets. Fifth Street is still one that is really in bad shape.
Send me that. I will, I'll look into it and make sure that we address those as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Wow, um, I I just, one comment, breathe. Breathe, just breathe. Thank you. Do we? That's all I have. Well, as. As she was talking, I'm 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 totally focused on everything, so fire hydrants, I'm thinking wolf hydrants, and I look at you. Nonprofits, I'm looking at Jose going, okay, I know he's gonna ask this, but she's actually going to every. Nonprofit, every nonprofit.
That's amazing.
Um, not isolating anybody. Uh, and every time you brought up contracts, I'm like, I don't know how many time we've talked about contracts, yeah. No, no comment, breathe and and eat lunch once in a while. Thank you. Do we have any? Uh, public comment, uh, Michael Ponse?
This is kind of getting embarrassing coming up here all the time.
Hi, welcome. No, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Have some questions, and I appreciate all your hard work that you've been doing, and it sounds like you've been very busy. San Juan appreciates it. I do have a couple uh uh comments or actually questions. Um, you mentioned that uh San Juan needs to know how much water we need. In our MNS blending report, it states it right there, half a million gallons a day. There's different scenarios. It drops down. Basically. Half a million, there's one scenario, scenario seven, it says two hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, currently, right now, we're using about a hundred sixty thousand gallons a day, so we're looking to. Double that, maybe even triple that. Uh, I think uh that five hundred thousand gallon per day. If I remember right from reading the Water Master Plan. Is at total buildout, which total buildout is at twenty sixty. Or twenty thirty-five to twenty sixty, one of those. It's down the road, fifteen years down the road at least. Um, so. That kind of concerns me that we don't know right now how much water we need, uh, because we're paying a lot of money for these reports. Uh, and the expenditures every month, I see. Tens of thousands of dollars going to MNS consulting every month. Uh, I'm sure we're paying our city engineer, Doug Pike, a good, good chunk. Um, there's another one I that we're paying to a consultant firm that I believe is working on water. I cannot remember the name and to write it down, excuse me. I do have a question, and it's a question I've been asking since. Since it was mentioned at the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting by our former city manager. He stated under his water import uh report. That an analysis was complete. He states, analysis, analysis complete to present to industrial users. I have been asking for that every meeting since then and have not got. The report and. It concerns me now that it appears that either. I hate to say this, but either the previous city manager wasn't being truthful that this report never existed. Or it and it can't be found, and if it can't be found, that's a great concern to me because I'm assuming. That MNS, our engineers, had something to do with that report. I think at one of your first um. Council meetings, I believe it was. January meeting that you stated that the previous city manager left a very detailed report of all our projects in town. And that made me feel good that, oh, okay, well, she's gonna find it. Wow. Where where is this analysis? And it concerns me that. The console hasn't, as a as a whole, hasn't um. Had any concern about this. I mean. Then we all know that industrial users are a big concern to our project. They're they're they're. They're one-third of our of the concern for our projects. The way I look at it is our waters is one. One-third of it, our water is basically bad to start with.
Mr. Ponse, your time is up.
Sorry.
Mike, Mike, real quick, what did you say the water use was per day? So I could just say something real quick, so. For anybody who complains about the one point three million gallon tank that's on the hill because it's unsightly. It replaced a two hundred and thirty thousand gallon cistern. So if you do this math. That fire engine right out there could would be able to pump what was left in that cistern in less than an hour. So.
From a wolf hydrant?
No.
Sorry.
It would have to be from one of four streets, but from the horse, yeah, you pushing it, but so just, just. I know it's unsightly, but it's without it, we, one of these days, we've been screwed, yeah.
Thank you. Anything on Zoom, Lightning?
No, um, hands raised on Zoom, Meta Mayor.
Thank you, uh, fire update, fire department update, sheriff update, public safety update. Can we have?
Good evening, council.
Okay.
I don't have that many slides this month, but we have been busy. All right, so my projects, I'll start with that one. So obviously, you've heard of the Fire District RFP. It was approved by the city Hollister on the fourth of this month. We approved it before that. We're waiting on the county. So most of my fire stuff is gonna follow up with, we're waiting on the county, just throwing it out there, being completely honest. Um, so that's where the RFP is. We still are the lead. I am the lead in the RFP, waiting on the county. Um, and then what else have I been doing? Reviewing our general budget with our city, our interim city manager, which there's a lot. So we've been talking about uh contracts and all that. We do listen. We do listen every time somebody calls us. We do listen every time somebody comes in and talks about where what bills we're paying. Uh, all the different contractors, all the different alarm companies, we're listening. We're we're putting together spreadsheets, and we're going through every single one, and we're trying to figure out where we can save money. So that is literally happening every single day in the back here. I just want to put that out there, so we're we're working hard on that. And the reason we're working so hard, and I'm mentioning it. And the reason we're working so hard, and I'm mentioning it, it's because it concerns me with the fire stuff. Um, I'm. I'm putting it out there right now that it's very concerning. Because there has been no communication with the county or the City of Hollister so far, and I don't know what contract they're gonna come back to with us. I don't know if it's gonna be a larger contract. I don't know where, you know, how we're gonna prepare for that. So that's why we're working so hard on that. Um, moving off from that, requested additional deputies for the Fourth of July. As we know that the, um, rally is coming back to the City of Hollister. Um, that's moving forward. I listened to their city council meeting earlier. It's moving forward. They will have security there. But I'm assuming they're also gonna ask for the sheriff's office support and everybody else. So I had, um, made a phone call to the sheriff's office and asked for an additional deputy. For us for that entire weekend and that was denied, I'm assuming due to staffing. Um, so, but the request was made and it was denied. Um, we're reviewing street barriers for large scale events on Third Street, just based on what's been going on in the nation. I'm just waiting for quotes. To get that back. And if we do end up buying something where I can find that money to purchase those and where we'll store them. So, but we are looking at things like that. Um, and then I've been working with the, uh, Fleet Enterprise for Fleet. I'm sorry, Enterprise Fleet Management, and that's a contract that's coming up. They will be presenting next March. We just have a couple more things to work out. And that'll be presented at next council's meeting. Um, and then I brought this up a couple. Months back about working with the California Highway Patrol and a program called Badges for, um, street enforcement. People running stop signs speeding through town. So that's been approved by Sheriff Taylor. So I just gotta work it out with the public service announcement on that program and we will be bringing that to San Juan. And I'll be working with the California Highway Patrol Gilroy Hollister Office. So that's forthcoming as well. Any questions before I move on to the next slide?
Yes, actually I do.
Yes.
Uh, would you be able to leverage, um. The C H P for the Fourth of July Hollister Rally situation in downtown?
I could always ask.
I, I'm just concerned, I just don't wanna find out, we, if they're denying that request, I don't wanna find out we have a big scale or something happens. And we're not prepared for it.
Yeah, I'll ask.
And then, um, one other, um, thing with regarding the Sheriff's Department. Uh, you, someone here was earlier during public comment and mentioned, it was Mike. That he called the Sheriff's Department and had, um, got, didn't really get a response. I know it was a non-emergency situation, but. Um, can we figure out what, what, why does it take so long? Um, I personally have. Called the Sheriff Department for certain things and it's taken, I mean, hours to get someone and especially when we have a deputy. That's supposed to be designated to our city. Why is it taking so long?
Okay, I'll ask.
So I'm just curious. Um, that's, that's all I got.
I just, um, I'm. The. I'm trying to be diplomatic. The, the rally, um. Hollister's current city council never consulted anybody about this rally. Um, we are going to be greatly impacted. Uh, parts of the county is going to be greatly impacted. They're pushing this incident action plan through. Way too fast. I was just talking to Roy a little bit. Something like this should be like a year out. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about it. There's going to be a lot of people here. We'll keep our fingers crossed, you know, everybody is okay and nobody gets out of control. But it, it, this was a very selfish move. For our friends over in Hollister to do this. And it's frustrating. It's really frustrating to hear what they did. Um, and unfortunately, we were, we, the Sheriff's Department is extremely short-staffed. That's probably the reasons why. You know, it's taking so long and that's why we're not getting a, you know, another deputy. We should have, what, four? And one engine company here that's going to get pulled out. Three, four times an hour. So just something to think about, you know, going forward to this thing.
Is there like a contingency plan? Like, like, let's just say, uh, sorry if we're getting off topic, but if it came to this, or let's just say, we just didn't have. The, the resources to have another officer on that day. Is, I, I don't know if this would, this is just me talking out of, you know, a lot of context here. Close, would closing the street or anything like that help us, uh, if, to prevent? Things from getting out of control or doing anything like that, diverting? So I, I don't know. I, I'm not a safety specialist, so would anything like that help you?
Let me, let me put some thought into that.
Yeah.
I haven't really thought that out, to be honest. So.
You know, anything that, that would stop something or a huge fight or something from starting, I, I don't know. Just, just saying, if we can't have the resources that we need here in town.
I'll work on a plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yeah, thank you, um, Roy. Um, I just had a question. You said you attended the County Homeless Task Force. Anything new come out of that meeting as far as our encampments and? How to help our houseless individuals?
No, nothing new.
Nothing new. And, um, I didn't realize. I agree with, um, Councilmember Frails. Maybe they could have, Hollister could have approved the event. But for next year, because that seems like a big push to get this done. What, in like four months, three months? I mean, you have to have everything done before that. And that does definitely affect our town. I mean, and I don't, I can't even envision how we're gonna do it. Maybe we have to go to, um, pain. I don't like this word, outside contracts for security. For that day. I don't know. Thank you.
Can we pull from Monterey County, um, agencies?
That would be a sheriff's office request. That goes through A O D, so it goes through Alameda County. And there's tons of requests that have to happen. So the sheriff normally does that. We as a city can't do that because we contract services with them.
Our sheriff has to ask for another department to come in?
Yes.
Could we ask our sheriff if he would mind?
I could always ask.
Yeah, no, absolutely. But if, if we have all of law enforcement in San Benito County tied up, it'll be Hollister P D. San Benito County Sheriff's Department, uh, local C H P. Um, I, I don't know if they're pulling from other, other counties, but if they're not and there's nothing major going on. In another county, um, if we can, um, maybe, maybe pull somebody from there. Um, just to have a law enforcement presence, even if we have one other person.
I could ask.
We, we do have our deputy here that day.
He will be here.
Okay.
He's still assigned.
Okay. Um, and anybody else you can think of deputizing?
No comment.
State parks, yeah. What about our state parks?
I could ask.
I could ask.
I'm sure Wendy can find somebody for a couple pistols.
Um, and then, uh. You were talking about something. No. No. Um. No. I don't know. It might have been fire. Hollis, oh, uh, Hollister pushing this through quickly, um. Without any regard to, to anybody. I mean, um, there wasn't. Huge conversations with the Sheriff's Department or the Police Department or the Fire Department, let alone letting San Juan know that. They were gonna have this event. There's some things that the City of Hollister shows up for and some things they don't. Did the county show up? Sorry, carry on.
All right, let me get back on track. All right, uh, the Law and Fire Monthly, uh, summary. Sheriff's Office had a hit and run, five hundred block of Fifth Street, uh, theft case. They had a warrant stop at a traffic, had, during a traffic stop at the one fifty-six in Monterey. And the driver had narcotics on him. They did issue nine traffic citations for drivers running stop signs and they towed one car. And then as far as the fire report, zero fires for the county, sixteen medicals or for the city, sixteen medicals. And that included responding to the county, vehicle accidents, nine, all in the county. Uh, and then they did seven fire inspections. So not much with the fire department. And then my next slide is a town hall meeting. That's scheduled for the Feb- uh, February twenty-second, which is a Saturday. It starts at one, San Juan School Gym. They donated their gym to us for that meeting, which we, uh, very appreciative of. Uh, we do have different speakers coming. Cal Fire has confirmed that they will be there. And there's gonna be a couple of them, uh, a lot of them that live in our community. Um, the Hill Hollister Fire Chief will show up as well. I'm gonna present. Um, and there'll be other people showing up. So we're hoping for a great meeting. It has been distributed amongst all our social media. I saw it on K I O N and I think K S B W also included it. Um, so we're hoping that the public shows up and really hears of. Uh, what's going on with their fire contract and how it directly affects them. Uh, I also reached out to our neighboring communities. Um, outside of town because Fire Station Four here responds to all them as well. So they need to be here as well and have their voice heard. And, um, elected officials have also been invited. Any questions about, that's, that's pretty self-inflicted. Uh, and then code enforcement. Uh, Fourth Street inspections were completed, notice of corrections were issued, property deemed safe for living. That was a question that Councilmember Morris Lopez had asked. Uh, no safety issues or inhabitable per zoning. Uh, three new code enforcement cases, signage issues and unpermitted work, one stop order for unpermitted windows and side panels. Uh, in a private home. No update on nuisance, oh, I'm sorry, there is an update on nuisance properties. Everything's going through the court system. So thank you to, um, our city attorney. Every single person that we, I had presented on before has responded. Now we're moving. I almost said quickly, but we're moving. Uh, it's in the court process. So those homes that we were dealing with, it's in the court process. So. Um, I feel pretty confident about that. It's something that the city really hasn't done in the past. And now we're starting to take action on some of these abandoned properties. So I, I feel pretty good about that. Uh, zero parking citations. Last parklet was removed and that was the one in front of Don Yester's. Um, just the barrels are left. It's still a one-way. So, um, and then we contacted San Benito Health Foundation with an update on unhoused male. Suggested they provide, uh, better fencing to that property. Um, I haven't heard back from them. I will continue to bother them. Um, and see if they do, do some, uh, better fencing on their property. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Aranda?
No questions or comments. Great job.
Thank you, Councilmember Frails.
No questions. Thank you, Roy.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you for highlighting the, um, item under code enforcement, but I just have one more question. So when you say Fourth Street, you actually mean the properties behind the San Juan Bakery on Polk?
On Polk.
Okay, so my understanding, maybe I'm confused. Was that zoned, um, dual for commercial and residential in both those warehouses?
I believe they were. I'd have to confirm.
Yeah, because that, that would be another issue. I mean, if they're safe now, but is it in the proper zoning? And also the, um, parking lot or space behind the bakery has quite a few abandoned vehicles. Or stored vehicles. So that would pose, I think, uh, sort of an obstruction if they did have to get in there for. Medical response or fire response. And I believe the same property owner has the same sort of abandoned vehicles. At another property that he owns.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Well done. Reports from city council representatives to regional organizations and committees. Councilmember Aranda?
Uh, yes, I'd like to say I attended the Integrated Waste, um. Integrated Waste of San Benito County's, um, committee, which was great, was just kind of getting on boarded, um. And getting situated, but, um, I got beat to the punch. I forgot her name, um, was here earlier in February twenty-second. Um, yeah, they were doing a community, um, not, not trash pickup day, but drop off your, your mattresses and whatnot there at the, um. At their, their headquarters. So, um, get out there. I'll, I'm gonna try to see if I can attend for a little bit just because I'm part of that committee. Um. And then the other one was attending, um. Ambag, um, same thing, getting started there. Uh, meeting went well. Um, I don't really have much to report. We're just kind of. Getting started again over there. And then also I attended the, um. God, San Benito, the Democrat, what, Democrat, Central Democratic.
San Benito County D C C.
I apologize for the name. I'm gonna butcher every name out there. Um, but I, the same thing, attended, um, uh, became an alternate there. So. Um, that was really nice, same kind of deal, um, just intros and, and whatnot. So, um, I think for the next report, I'll have a little more, um. Some more, more body in the, the, the messaging there. But other than that, um, it's been great.
Thank you, Councilmember Frails.
So we had the Fire District meeting, right, last month? Did we have it last month?
No, I think it was canceled.
That's right, it was canceled.
Yeah.
It was canceled. And then I have tomorrow, I've got the, I'm talking about butchering names, the area on aging in Santa Cruz. Alliance, area, area alliance on aging. Okay, there you go. Another acronym. Um, so that's, that's gonna be, um, I'm a little nervous about that because it seems like a big deal. So I'm. Um, I'm gonna go in with open eyes. Um, and that's so far, that's, that's it.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, um, the one committee I belong to, the Intergovernmental was canceled for January. And the upcoming committee meeting is the C O G or the Council of Governments, which deals with, um. Our local transportation, um, issues. That's coming up on Thursday, so I guess it's upcoming. I guess the one thing I can, um, say that I did attend with the mayor was our, um, mayors and city council members. Conference in Garden Grove. Yeah, and that was very informative. It was three days, um, met a lot of people. Um, learned, um, a lot, you know, repeat, but still it's kind of nice to get it refresher. And then attended their ethics, um, training and social harassment training. So I'll be bringing in those certificates for, for the city. Um, and that's about it for now.
Thank you. Uh, I was at the Water Resources Association Committee Meeting. Um. Uh, we rotate for jurisdictionally for the chair. Um, San Juan Batista was the chair last year. The City of Hollister is the new chair. They didn't show up. I remain the chair. Uh, we talked about the big thing, um, uh. Sean Novak had, had done an amazing job in his tenure at the, um, as head of the Water Resources Association. Um, but, uh, we now have a, uh, in our. Uh, at the front desk, um, we have a free home water leak check flyer. Um, so. The way that the Water Association works is, um, they respond to anything. It for, um, water awareness, um, in all of San Benito County. We get to use them for free. I mean, we pay into it, so there is a, a fee that the city pays. But if you think you have a leak on your property, you can call into the Water Resources Association. Uh, the San Benito County Water District and ask for a free leak detection. Um, and their number on the bottom of your screen, eight three one, six three seven, four three seven eight. Um, they also have a toilet, turf and water softener rebate. So if anybody is looking to replace. Their, uh, plush lawns, um, you can replace it with turf and get some cash back. Um, old toilets is the same way, showerheads, same way, uh, water softeners, same thing. Um, you can convert, you can actually turn in your old water, salt water softener for, um. Um, you can convert, you can actually turn in your old water, salt water softener for, um, an exchange unit. Um, anti-an exchange unit. Um, and, and get some cash back on that. Uh, I was at the LAFCO meeting. Um, we opened the meeting by removing our two public members. Um, Richard Benton Court and the public member alternate, Elias Salinas. So, uh, and that was without cause. Um, they had done nothing wrong, just, just so everybody knows. Um, the San Benito County LAFCO is now actively seeking, um, a public commissioner and an alternate public commissioner. So if anybody out there is looking to serve on LAFCO, um, local area formation. Uh, it would be great, um, uh, the, the application process is now open. Um, during that meeting, um, the chair drafted a letter to rescind the invitation to special districts to LAFCO. And asked for a fee from the special districts of, uh, seventy-five percent to join LAFCO. That fee was, um, sub- subsequently pulled. And, um, but the letter to rescind the invitation was passed. That does not mean that special districts cannot come into LAFCO. It just means that the invitation was rescinded. Um, in the January meeting, the chair placed a hold on all MSRs. And in this past meeting, the executive officer asked for an ad hoc committee to review. The wastewater MSR. It had been, um, out and reviewed. There was an ad hoc committee on the previous commission. It came before the entire commission and it has gone out to all of the jurisdictions involved in. Uh, that MSR, um, anybody who's associated with wastewater, San Juan Batista, Sunny Slope. Uh, San Benito County Water District, uh, City of Hollister. Um, so an ad hoc committee was formed. It's Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner Cosmiki. Um, there was a motion to bring that back for comment, um, by that ad hoc, um, from the ad hoc committee. Uh, in March. And there, uh, was an ad hoc committee formed for the city of San Juan Bautista's MSR. And myself and Commissioner Zanger are on that one. That's about it on that. It was a very lengthy meeting. Um, after that, I was on the San Benito County Democratic Central Committees Meeting. Um, I serve as Congresswoman Lofgren's. Delegate. I got there very late, uh, and, and enough time to be sworn in. Fire District was canceled. Uh, intergovernmental, intergovernmental will now be in San Juan Batista. Um, and that will be coming here in March fifth. Thank you. Um, and I also went to the mayor's, uh, the League of Cities, um, conference in Southern California. A lot of, wow, there were a lot of Northern Californians there. It was incredible. Um, we met so many people who, uh. We met somebody in the elevator that said, uh, hey, do you know Kurt? What? Uh, then there was another gentleman who asked if, uh, we knew, uh, a doctor at, uh, Hazel Hawkins. It was really weird. Um, but they talked a lot about, um, the fires down there and. FEMA and help and how council members. Uh, can, can talk to each other during an emergency. Um, it seems like that was a really big issue that. Uh, they were afraid of violating Brown Act. Um, to try and get anything done. Uh, Malibu was struggling greatly. And that's all I have. That's all I have to say about that. Uh, what? He, did I miss public comment? Wow, people. Does the council mind if he comes in? Okay, bring him in. Thank you. Mr. Hopper, sorry, I missed you.
That's quite all right, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
I, I had just a brief comment, uh, following up on Roy's, uh, report. And I may be wrong about this, but my understanding was that. The city approved within its budget to have a second deputy. To help with coverage for the city. Yet it was my understanding, and I was not at this meeting, so somebody correct me if I was wrong, the board of supervisors voted against that. Even though that it was, you know, funded within our budget. I don't know if Roy has any information on that or if the council has any information, but that's frustrating to me. And this issue regarding the Fourth of July, um, you know, Roy's very correct. If. You know, he may be able to ask the sheriff for, to have some deputies in town, but the reality is. If we were to have any significant incidents, uh, and we have had those here in this town. It would have to be a mutual aid situation to get extra law enforcement to respond. And I don't know what Sheriff Taylor's planning is around that. I'm sure Roy is meeting with him to discuss that. But even though the rally is in Hollister, we have had significant problems. Uh, on the streets of San Juan because it's an attractive place for, for folks to come. And, you know, nothing negative against bikers in general, but it's, you know, it's a large public event and people are looking for other venues. Uh, so those were the two, uh, comments I had regarding what Roy had to mention. And I am particularly interested on that issue on the funding for the second deputy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And again, I apologize for not, for missing that. Uh, city council announcements. Sorry. Oh, public comment, of course.
No, I, I just wanted to say that, uh, somebody mentioned, um, for the Fourth of July. And I think Roy said he's gonna check into, uh, state parks. Um. It's, it's my understanding that state park officers are jeopardized, police officers. So I think that'd be a great, great, um, opportunity to pull from not only our state park, other state parks. Fourth of July, all the sheriff's departments are gonna be busy, so they're not gonna wanna give up, uh, anybody. And I also wanna make, uh, our correction to the earlier comment that I made to Scott. It's two hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day of water. It's a hundred and sixty of sewage.
Thank you. Again, apologies for missing that. We good? City, the city council announcements. Councilmember Aranda?
Uh, I, I don't have any announcements other than.
Other than? Thank you.
Yeah, just, uh, attended a couple shindigs here in town. The, uh, the, the Super Bowl at the VFW was a blast. Those guys did a great job. We had a really good time. Um, it's, uh, they're, they're talking about being open on Fridays and Saturday nights. So that's cool. And then, you know, with baseball coming too, they're gonna do, probably have, they put, they've got a big screen in the main room. And then, uh, I attended and worked. The, uh, the Native Daughters of the Golden West dinner with, uh, barbecue. It was a success.
The Valentine's dinner?
The Valentine's dance, yes. It was a, it was a success. Uh, um, everybody had a blast. The food was outstanding. Um. Just a big thank you to so many organizations and, and restaurants and stores and, uh, you know, hardware stores in town. There were so many, um, there was just a ton of, um. Silent auction items. So that went over well and there was some good stuff. Um, and, you know, my wife worked really hard at it. So it was a, it was a great event. I'm tired. I think I'm still recovering, but, uh, it was good. And, you know, I think all, all the, the, the native daughters helped out. Sean and Fran jumped in there. Sean, Fran is going to become a native daughter shortly. So Sean and Fran jumped in behind the bar and they, they did, you know, what they always do. You know, good stuff. So, goo- good event. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
I don't either. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So we lost a, um, a life, a, a longtime member of our community, um, passed a couple days ago. Um, Charlie Shockey passed. Um, Charlie Shockey owned, um, the La Casa Rosa. Um, first it was his parents and then Charlie, he passed just recently. So there is some information out there for his rosary, correct? Okay, um, I think it's on the Facebook, What's Happening San Juan site or something. You can probably find that. So, thanks.
Oh, it's too late, but maybe next time we could give a pause at their next meeting, if it's okay. We lost two iconic, um, citizens. We lost Charlie Shockey and Ms. Lupe Juarez. She actually worked for the state park. She was, was she ninety-nine? Ninety-six? We lost her in January and then Charlie Shockey passed on Saturday. And, um, two very iconic, um, residents of the city.
Can, can we make sure that we put a moment of silence on the next agenda for that, please? Thank you. Well, that's a heck of a way to end a meeting early. Thank you very much. Um, may I have a, uh, some upcoming announcements really quick? Uh, Saturday, February twenty-second is the fire, um, community meeting at the school. Bye, guys. Thank you. Uh, Tuesday, March eleventh is our mid-year budget, uh, special meeting. And Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, special meeting on, uh, water. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Freel, seconded by Councilmember, uh, Aranda. Uh, roll call?
Uh, Councilmember Aranda?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes, seven forty-one.